Why? It's a tiny cottage. Not big enough for anyone but children. Hmm, very naughty children who don't clean their rooms. Just look at this dust and those dirty dishes. Can you help me?
Oh no, our home is in the forest.
You must be kidding.
We don't clean, we don't dust.
We don't cook. As a matter of fact, we must be leaving now.
Yeah, we are not together. See ya.
Meanwhile, seven little men working hard in the line of goodbyes. I bet you know those seven men. The ones who own this very tiny cottage.
There's the seven dwarfs.
They were almost quitting town. Time to go back to their little cottages and put up their feet. Time's up everybody, let's head home. Come on, happy quitting time.
Yeah.
Whoa, it's sleepy. Hold up there men. Something's peculiar.
Hey. Huh? It's a bird out yonder. It's coming from our window.
Who could it be?
Varmint.
Piders.
Rattles.
Gather round all, I'm gonna sneak up and catch up with Jerry's trespass. Uh huh, caught the varmint red handed.
One, two.
Yeah, they called varmint.
It sounded more like a, like a hyde.
Hyde.
Like a lady.
She's beautiful. Can you keep her? Yes, yes, can we keep her? Can we keep her?
By the scrum mat, oh. Toe tripping tackled by the Chargers, but Nicolay remains in control. Pick and go, pick and go. Nice rucking. Try to get it out quickly here. Good passing. Out to the back line.
The fullback, the fullback filled in. Looks like Nicolay. Now he got the score. Nicolay got the score.
Got a try in the corner there.
Wow, there was a nice, nifty backfield movement.
There was. That was good, quick passing. Once they, they, you know, got the ball out cleanly a couple of times with a good forward crash play. Got the ball out. Good, clean passes. Nobody had to stutter step to catch a pass. They caught it on the run, made a good delivery. Boom, 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 right down.
Out doors, right now. No kids, no pets, and no princesses.
Oh please don't make me go. You see, the queen is after me. She's after her huntsmen to kill me.
Oh please, she's a mean old thing. You are beautiful.
Yes, yes, beautiful.
Why thank you. If you'll have me stay, I could cook, get clean, and take good care of you. How's that count?
It really looks like you could use the help.
Hmm, the place does look a lot better here men.
Hey. My favorite pillow. I've been looking for this.
Hey look, she's out there. She thinks of me.
Doc, can we keep her?
Of course you can save her.
Big mistake Doc.
What's for dinner?
Yes, yes, yes please.
Yes, yes, I made a delicious stew for you.
Hey Doc, a lucky day.
But first you have to wash your hands.
Wash our hands? Why would you do that?
Wash our hands.
You silly little men.
Nope, nope, no serene. This coma's my trouble.
Meanwhile, back at the castle.
Ah, yes, I wonder what that wicked spirit's up to.
What's in the box, your majesty?
Never mind you, my dear. I want my mirror.
Ah, yes, my dear mirror. You should ask some good news for me now.
Mirror, mirror, the best of the best of heaven.
If I tell you, you'll break me.
Break you? Of course I will not break you.
Promise you won't break me?
I promise, I promise, I promise. Cross my heart, now speak up.
You might read our marriage true, but Princess Snow White is never the you.
A what? Snow is dead, you stupid mirror. The huntsman has broken your heart. It's here, in his box.
Evil.
Silence.
How could you, your majesty?
Lady of Manhattan, Mary's love, that elf spirit's only a wild thing.
Ah, I've been tricked, tricked. You, you're in this. You've been lying to me, lying.
Remember your promise?
Ah, yes, my promise. You may go. Make sure you don't trip on your way out. Ah, dear. What a pain. Servants, clear up this mess at once.
Yes, your majesty.
Ah, I've been tricked. We'll see about that.
So the queen went out to the haunted forest where her evil spirit servant was being held as prisoners.
She ordered them all to come in sister at once.
Are you all unattended?
Shazam is here to serve you, my queen.
Trishla is here to serve you, your majesty.
Who's here to serve you and all evil kinds, your majesty? Batman is here to serve you.
I'm looking good, my evil pretties.
Course as I, hocus pocus. And I am ready to walk off over evil magic or evil heart desires. Glade the woman is here to serve you, your majesty.
Booty bopsey boot is here to serve you.
Vampire is here to serve you, your majesty.
Abracadabra is here to serve you.
I am in need of a disguise, my spirit servants. Have you brought any magic potions?
A magic stew, a magic stew, a quickly brew of stew for you.
Then get to it.
Snake skin scales. And slimy toes.
Ooh, slimy.
Witches with gods carrots.
Spider's head and fresh breath.
With creepy snail skin.
You'll love this brew, it's just for you. Taste it, your majesty. You're going to love it.
Snake skin scales, slimy toes, witches with gods carrots. Spider's head, fresh breath, creepy snail skin. Evil blood, iron teeth, blackened fur. Mix it all for your life, you will get a piece of prize. Snake skin scales, slimy toes, witches with gods carrots. Spider's head, fresh breath, creepy snail skin. Evil blood, iron teeth, blackened fur. Mix it all for your life, you will get a piece of prize.
Watch these spirits see my fingers, see my toes, see my beautiful horny nose.
You'll need this, your majesty.
Poison, is it?
Whoever takes a bite of the apple will fall into a sleeping sickness.
She will never awaken again.
Unless, unless.
She can be awakened only by last birthday kiss.
Right.
She makes them pie for the dwarfs. She makes something special for them every day. She cooks and cleans under their beds. She reads their favorite stories at bedtime. Oh, I bet they love that.
I do believe that those dwarves are enjoying Snow White's care of them.
Yeah, she's a good mom.
Both the dwarfs eat pies when they get home. Grumpy loves pie, though he never admits it.
What is that I smell?
Oh, hello there. That's cherry pie.
Well, why are you making the cherry pie?
It's the dwarf's second favorite.
Second favorite? Well, what's their first favorite?
My apple, of course, but apples aren't in season just yet.
Well, look, my sweet child, what I have here.
Isn't that curious? An apple in June. It looks quite ripe.
Would you like to have it?
Then I can make apple pie. That one surely please go away.
This is magic apple, my dear.
Magic?
Whoever takes a bite of the apple may have their fond wish come true.
Snowy thought of all the tiny sugar machine stars all driven off the prince.
Magic apple, magic apple, everywhere in the city. Waiting for the rain, my prince, all too late. Yes, drain up, my dear. Now take a big bite, your wish will come true. Yes, sleep, sleep, little princess. No, I am the fairest one in the world.
The queen did not know about the forest animals. She did not know that they were watching and protecting Snow White day and night. Come on, Emmy, Penny, Foxy, everyone, let's get her. The wicked queen, of course.
I'm wicked, pal.
You're making me run, little little. Get away, I tell you.
Please lock yourself on up. High cliff. The sea pressure below.
Yikes.
She tried to get some of these super balance.
Get away from me, you pretty little critters. Get away, I tell you.
Who are you calling creepy?
Ellen, I'm going to fall. I am the queen, you know. I am the fairest.
Not for long, your majesty. I'm glad we're here. I hope she never comes back. But why? No, why? You think she's, she's dead? Oh, no. She's gone. The dwarfs couldn't bury her. They spoke of her great crisis and their hearts broke it.
Hello? Hello? Anybody home? Hello, old chap. I am wandering through a village and my horse needs watering. Uh, what's going on here? Why are you crying?
It's Snow White, sir.
Oh, shorty. I've never met her, but I feel I know her somehow. It seems as though I've been looking for her all my life.
Too late, sir. She's gone.
You can't be gone. I've just found you. Snow, ah, wait, Jacob's come tricking us.
This is Snow White waiting in a beautiful castle in a faraway land where the wicked queen would never mind her. But her father could visit her whenever he wanted to. And the dear little dwarfs were always welcome. And the kind-hearted animals moved to a forest nearby. The lonesome left the queen to join the prince's army. The most, the lovely ladies are waiting to be carried in. And the evil spirits have to think about their evil ways. They always think Snow White of everything.
Yep, ma'am, it's true.
And they all live happily ever after.
Except for you, the wicked queen. Believe in your wishes, your wishes come true. Your fairy tales happen to people like you. Wherever this medicine or the laughter, that's where you will find happy ever after. Believe it, dream it, whatever you want to be. Believe it, so believe it, try it and then you will see. If you believe in your wishes, your wishes come true. Your fairy tales happen to people like you. Wherever this medicine or the laughter, that's where you will find, that's where you will find happy ever after.
Thank you very much. Obviously, we all have enjoyed it. We have our parents that are backstage helping as well. So if you know anybody that's in the program, I think the Milk Scout program, you can also send your thanks to them. We also have a stage crew of Nathan Brandenburg and Ava Zyhowski and Michael Lucas. We could, this is getting out of here as well. We hope you're coming.
Oh, her eyes, her eyes, the stars look like they're not shining. Her hair, her hair falls perfectly without a dying. She's on the move, I'd never ever leave. When I see your face, no one knows. I would change, got a baby. Just the way it is. When I see your face, no one knows. I would change, got a baby. Just the way it is.
Welcome to the 2016 OHS Variety Show. I'm Sean Bull.
And I'm Mitch Sharkis. We'll be your hosts for tonight. That means we're the people distracting you just enough to keep you wondering, shouldn't it really take that long to move a piano and give someone a microphone?
As soon as I was done doing this last year, I swore I would never host again. Writing jokes that befit a family show like this, I reason, is like digging for diamonds with a toothbrush. And only an idiot would put himself through that twice.
Turns out, we're only allowed to quit when we graduate or when they can invent the power to bring Westhorpe or Luke Davis back as holograms.
At the moment, it seems that technology is reserved almost exclusively for Tupac Shakur, so here we are.
Sean started writing back in August, and I'm not gonna spray myself in the face with raid this year. And our PSC director wants suddenly quit and start making Kung Fu movies. You know, I think we learned a lot from our mistakes and all the signs are pointing towards a good show.
The one thing that hasn't changed, of course, is the great lineup of performances. So without further stalling, let's welcome Catherine Felence, singing "As If He Never Said Goodbye" from Sunset Boulevard.
I don't know why I'm frightened. I know I'm here around here. The cardboard treats, the painted seas, the sound here. Yes, old world to rediscover. But I'm not in any hurry. And I need a moment. Oh, whispered conversations. Always. The atmosphere is thrilling here, as always. Feel these early morning madness. Feel the magic in the making. Why everything's as if we've never said goodbye. I've spent so many mornings just trying to resist you. I'm trembling now, can't know how I miss you. Miss the fairy tale adventure in this ever-spinning playground. We were young together. I'm coming out of makeup. Life's already burning. Not long until the cameras will start hurting me. And the early morning madness. And the magic in the making. Yes, everything's as if we've never said goodbye. I don't want to be alone. That's all in the past. This world's waiting long enough. I'd come home at last. And this time will be bigger. And brighter. So watch me fly, oh, why? Eh? Would I stop my head from shining? Has there ever been a moment? With so much to live for? Oh, whispered conversations. Always. So much to say, just not today, but always. We'll have the early morning madness. We'll have the magic in the making. Yes, everything's as if we've never said goodbye. Yes, everything's as if we've never said goodbye. We talk the world's greatest truth.
What a great way to kick off tonight's solo X. Wait a minute. Mitch? What are you wearing? Dude, is that your costume? I said we weren't doing the Peter Pan bit anymore.
Oops. Our next act is a brother-sister duo, a kind not seen since Donnie and Mary Osmond.
Ormonds?
No, Ginger. No, really. I just meant that they work well together and make good music.
Oh, that makes sense. Hopefully, that's the last 70's reference of the night.
Are you kidding? Star Wars is popular again? The 70's references have only just begun. But now we have to think all the way back to 53, because the next song is inspired by Peter Pan.
I always thought the essential Peter Pan was Robin Williams in a hood.
You're dead to me. Please welcome Marina and Miles McKnight, singing "Lost Boy."
Peter Pan, that's what they call me. I promise that you'll never be lonely.
Ever since that day. Lost boy, you're never leaving. You came out. Peter Pan, in your forty days. Always on the run from Captain Hook.
Run, run, lost boy.
They say.
Away from all of reality. Neverland is home to lost boys like me. And lost boys like me are free.
He's free for me and thinks he doesn't turn into me. Will he even believe in me? To give me my faith in the battle of the day.
To your beautiful destiny.
And we saw the love that's out there, and never learned. I realize that I'm a fool.
He's with me, my feet hit the sand.
Ever since that day.
I am a lost boy who never learned. Usually hanging out with the old Peter Pan. When they were bored, we'd play in the woods. Always on the run from Captain Hook. Run, run, lost boy, they say to me. Away from all of reality. Neverland is home to lost boys like me. And lost boys like me are free. Neverland is home to lost boys like me. And lost boys like me are free. Peter Pan is the...
Sorry to do that, folks, but good evening. Welcome to the July 18 Village Board Meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bollig.
Here.
Boudreau.
Here.
Brett Hauer. Carpenter.
Here.
Grenier.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Staten.
Thank you.
Yes.
President Staten couldn't be here tonight, so I'm filling in for him. We'll move on to item three, which is, these are always nice items. We can bring on new employees, so. Chief, I'll let you take over for a bit.
All right. I'm gonna hide over here. I'm gonna try and get in a spot where everyone can see me, and I don't want to back to everyone, so. Good evening. On behalf of the members of the Oregon Police Department, I wish to welcome you to the oath of office ceremony for William Janson. He likes to be called Will, so we're gonna try Will. The mission of the Oregon Police Department is to safeguard lives and property of the people we serve, to reduce the incidence of fear of crime, and to enhance public safety while working with a diverse community to improve the quality of life. Our objective is to do so with honor and integrity while at all times conducting ourselves with the highest ethical standards to maintain public trust and confidence. We all know how important that is, especially with what's going on in society today, so we are very thankful to work in the Village of Oregon. We've received, I can't tell you countless community members coming up and thanking us for what we do. Will and I were actually in Milwaukee today, and we went out for lunch, and we had several people come up, not even being from the area, and thanking us for what we do and support of us, so it was very nice to see. The men and women of the Oregon Police Department promote a safe environment through police and citizen interaction and by equitable enforcement of the laws of the Village of Oregon, the State of Wisconsin, within the framework of the Constitution of the United States. The members of the Oregon Police Department are committed to working together as a team by being innovative, professional, and responsive to public safety concerns for our citizens. We have created an organization staffed with highly motivated, dedicated, and competent personnel, and we're pleased that Will has accepted our offer to become a valued member of the Oregon Police Department. Will comes to us from the Capitol Police Department, where he performed various duties, and was recently assigned to the Dignitary Protection Unit. Will also has experience as an EMT and a bachelor's degree from Winona State University. It is with great honor and pride that we swear Will into the Oregon Police Department. I will now ask the Village Board Vice President, Jerry Bollig, to please step forward and formally deliver the oath of office to Will Janson, Oregon Police Department's newest law enforcement officer.
He needs his glasses.
I understand.
I need better glasses. Will, please repeat after me. I, William T., or Will T. Janson.
I, William T. Janson.
solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
solemnly swear that I will support and comply with the Constitution of the United States of America.
Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws, ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances of the Village of Oregon.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Village of Oregon Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics and the law enforcement order. And that I will faithfully discharge duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a sworn officer of the Oregon Police Department.
I will assume my duties as of July 18, 2016.
I will assume my duties as of July 18, 2016.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Blank commission.
We may need you someday, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
Thank you. Congratulations, Jeff. For the board, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Will.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations, Carpenter. Congratulations.
You don't want me photobombing them?
Hey Doug, you wanna roll down so they're not.
They don't know who I am, they don't care.
There you go.
I can be in the picture. Do you wanna sign those?
I can't understand why you don't want to be in photos, Eric.
Yeah.
You could, yeah, photobomb. Or you could do the thumbs up.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Wake you up.
That whisper from you.
Staten never does that.
Oh, you just wanted to take the keys off.
He does that just to.
I think we're set. Okay, now I'll move on to item five, which is the discussion of possible action regarding hiring of Jeff Oret as part-time Police Secretary Two position at the hour of the date of 17/23 effective July 19. Chief, you're up again.
Yep, thank you. We conducted a hiring process for the part-time secretary position. We are thankful that Jeff did a good job. He was our former intern with us, and if there are any questions, I can certainly answer them, but he's the one that we decided we would like to hire for the part-time secretary position.
I'd entertain a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. I'll just, for the minutes, I'll just indicate that that's a budgeted position that's been vacant.
Correct.
And so it's already funded in the 2016 budget.
Correct.
Any further questions or discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries, seven zip. Or six zip. Item number six, discussion of possible action regarding the disposal of two printers and two laptops in the Police Department.
So we have a couple of old printers that we'd like to get rid of with your permission that are not working. We also have two laptops that some of the officers were using that are no longer being used. We'd like to erase the hard drives, as we discussed before and how that procedure worked, and try and sell them and get some money back for them with your permission.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of two printers and two laptops in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries, six zip.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, now I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Chairman, Planning Chairman Schnelly, and find out how to run a meeting.
Yeah, right. Okay, we'll call the meeting in order, please, have a roll call.
John Bano.
Here.
Michaela Bano.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Mar.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Schnelly.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Smithback. And Mozahn is absent.
Thank you. We have verification of proper legal onus in the packet, correct? So move on to item 10. And.
Jackie's gonna do it.
Jackie's gonna do that for us tonight? Hi, Jackie.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jackie Mish. I work with Mike Slavney at Vandewellen Associates. We're your village planners, and just here to kind of explain the nature of the proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. These changes really were initiated out of a desire to amend the plan to accommodate development on the north side of town that wanted to do vehicle repair, as well as a music studio and outdoor storage. And so that would require a change to the zoning ordinance, or excuse me, a, well, it would require a change to the zoning ordinance, but basically, in order to rezone to general industrial, we needed to amend the comprehensive plan to allow for that change. And then amending the comprehensive plan can be a little complicated. There's a lot of steps that state statutes require us to go through, and so we thought it'd be a good opportunity to look around and see if there are other places on the village's future land use map that might need updating or other amendments. So we did identify five other locations that we thought would be good candidates to amend while we were going through the process anyway for this specific development. So I'll just walk you guys all through, all through those six changes. And you should have this map in your packet.
She'll explain it.
It's new to me. I'll just walk us through the six changes proposed. And in your packet, you have two maps. One shows, one shows the future land use map as it is right now, and we've outlined all of the parcels that are proposed to be changed, and, but the color shown on the map is the color that is shown right now. And then the second map in your packet shows how the map would look if we did indeed adopt all of those amendments.
They unfortunately have only black and white ones. I forgot about that.
That's okay, 'cause I'm gonna explain this to you.
I have one copy I'm sharing with them.
Not a problem. There might be color online.
They have hard copies. You have an old map.
Yeah, if you saw it online, you should have it in color. Anyway, so the first, the first proposed change is on Cusick Parkway, and this is the property I was referring to before in which they want to do vehicle repair use, which is not allowed in the current zoning district, which is planned industrial. But in order to rezone to general industrial, which would allow the truck repair, we do have to change the future land use map. So that property is right here. And then the remaining changes are really just to reflect development that has happened in the village since we last updated the future land use map. So it's not really a change in policy at all. It's just kind of reflecting what's on the ground now, and then recognizing that what's on the ground now is probably what we want to see in the future. We figured it's good to update the future land use map. So there are three other sites in this area right here, which is the Oregon Parks Edition. And so there's, this area was planned for planned neighborhood, but since that development has kind of come through and has been rezoned and replanted, we have just updated the future land use map categories to reflect the land use pattern that has been approved. So there's, we're changing this northern parcel here, number two, from planned neighborhood to stormwater management. We are changing, number three, we're proposing to change number three from planned neighborhood to two-family residential, and proposing to change the southern portion, number four, from planned neighborhood to single family, again reflecting what has already been approved. There's another change, number five, just kind of to the south. That area was planned for planned business, and is right now being developed as Beehive, kind of an assisted living situation. So that's really institutional use, so we figured we should show that as institutional. And then finally, there's a parcel on the southeast side of the village that was planned for multifamily. I think it was, I think it was planned for multifamily because we didn't think there would be interest in single family on Wolf Street, just 'cause it's a busier, higher-traffic street. But my understanding is there is some interest in developing single-family development there, and the villages, the village tends to want to accommodate single-family development whenever possible, and since there is interest in that location, we recommend changing this designation to single family. That's pretty much the nature of the changes. There are no changes proposed to the text of the plan, so it's just changes to this map. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Next, I'll move on to the public hearing. And I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak regarding the complaint as it stands? Hearing none. We'll move on to reading of submitted comments. Are there any submitted comments, Mike?
No.
So we'll move on again to statements and questions from the public. Does anyone have a statement or a question they'd like to address the board? Thank you. And I'll turn it over again to Plan Chairman Schnelly for Plan Commission questions. Actually, I'll just take Plan Commission questions and those board questions at this time. Do we have any from any board? Either board? So I'm gonna close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Staff, I'm just wondering if you have any public hearing questions?
Yep.
And item 14, Plan Commission consideration of Resolution 1624, recommending plan amendments to the Village Board. Chairman Schnelly.
Does anybody have any questions about their resolution? Okay, need a motion recommending Village Board approval of the plan amendments as presented?
So moved.
Wait a second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. Back to the Village Board. We're gonna, I'm gonna entertain a motion to waive the first and second readings and move for adoption. Could I please have that motion?
So moved. Second.
And we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. I'll move on now to adopt the motion, and I entertain a motion to do that.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's the end of our joint meeting.
For the complaint.
For the complaint. So move on to item 17, which I will turn over to Chairman Schnelly again.
Okay, we have a public hearing for conditional permit for a group development at 375 North Borough Avenue. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody have any comments to that? Might as well let everybody know again what your plans are. The Village Board hasn't heard anything but us at the Plan Commissioner last week, so go ahead. Go just tell us a quick summary of what you're gonna be doing there.
Troy Kramer. Can you, can you pull the mic down, please? Thank you. Troy Kramer. Thank you. I'm gonna use the location for light maintenance and prep for auto sales, and then cars are gonna be sent somewhere else, so I'm gonna do online, online sales.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
All right. Any other public comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Anybody have any questions? We talked about this the other night. We need a recommendation Village Board approval of CUP for a group development at 375 North Borough to do auto repair. Have that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It's on to you now, Jerry.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Schnelly. I will entertain a motion at this time to approve a CUP for the, for a group development for allowing the tenant of Slight Heart Plumbing to do auto repair.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
Okay, item number 19, discussion possible recommendation to Village Board regarding.
You guys are done.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Usually I close the public hearing, should've said you go. Discussion, discussion possible recommendation to Village Board for conditional, conditional use permit for Mr. Willie Enterprises, Brad Willie Enterprises, 748 Cusick Parkway. We had a public hearing last Thursday night, at which time, we closed the public hearing. We did not actually take action at that point. That's what we have to do at this time. So we need a motion recommending Village Board approval of CUP for Brad Willie Enterprises, 748 Cusick Parkway.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
And now I'll entertain a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Brad Willie Enterprises at 748 Cusick Parkway.
So moved.
A second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, moving on to item number 21. It's a public hearing for amending the section of the Village, Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances pertaining to, pertaining to General Industrial Zoning District, Section 17.203 pertaining to the tables of land use. At this time, we'll public hearing. You wanna give me a summary on that?
So, so this is basically allowing, the next two items is for a gradual project. This is gonna allow to have Academy Sound in the building, basically.
It's more than one business, essentially, on the property, or the building. Okay. Is there any public input? Anybody have any comments to that? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Move on to discussion. Again, we discussed this briefly, I think, on Thursday evening, so we understand what they're doing. They're gonna, I think you were, yeah, you were there. No, you weren't there. They're, they're gonna have different uses within the building. There'll be some rental space.
Yeah, there's gonna probably be truck repair, there's gonna be truck repair, Academy Sound, and someone's gonna rent storage outside.
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. So, we are looking for a motion to the Village Board approval of ordinance 16-22 amending the following section of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances, Section 17.105, Pren 5, Pren B, pertaining to the General Industrial Zoning District and Section 17.203 pertaining to the tables of land uses.
So moved.
We have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, actually to waive the first and second readings and move for adoption of ordinance 16-22.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now I would entertain a motion to adopt for ordinance 16-22 amending the section of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances, Section 17.105, 5B, pertaining to the General Industrial Zoning District and Section 17.203 pertaining to the tables of land uses. This will add indoor commercial entertainment and personal professional services as principal land uses permitted by a condition use permit in the General Industrial Zoning District.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Move on to 23.
Yeah, we have a public hearing for the application of rezoning request for a property located 748 Cusick Parkway. For those rezoning requests, allow the property at that, at that address to currently zone planned industrial to be zoned as general industrial. At this time, we'll open a public hearing. Is there any input from anybody? These all pertain to the same property, in case you're interested. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We need a motion recommending Village Board approval of ordinance 16-23 changing the zoning classification of property located at 748 Cusick Parkway from planned industrial to general industrial.
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. I will now take this to the Village Board, and as part of that action, I will waive the first, I would entertain a motion to waive the first and second readings and move for adoption. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. I will now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 16-23, which changes the zoning classification of the property located at 748 Cusick Parkway from planned use industrial to general industrial. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussions at this point? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Six zero.
Okay, we have no other business, so we need a motion to adjourn Plan Commission.
So moved.
We have a second. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Planning Commission, for being here tonight.
So Brad, you are officially done. Congratulations. After all that.
I'm good with that. Okay, we'll move on to item... We'll get planning a minute to clear out here.
Oh yeah. It's the second thing after the next one.
Thanks for the lesson Greg. Thanks for the lesson. Okay. We'll move on back to item twenty-six, and at this point, we've got the actions from the Planning Commission, I'm gonna turn this over to trustee Carpenter.
Okay. So our first item is a discussion of possible action regarding approval of minor amendment, which is installing a fence to a specific implementation plan for the Village of Foxborough. So at this time, I would make a motion that we approve the minor amended amendment of installing the fence with a two-foot setback from the sidewalk for the fence.
Second.
Any questions on this?
So is it along Wolf Street?
Yes.
How long, what's the lifespan of the fence?
You know, we didn't talk about that, I know it's a wooden fence. What's the lifespan of a fence like that?
Depends on if it's maintained, I think it should be fifteen years, ten or fifteen years, or depends on what type of material they use, but for a wood fence, it should be ten or fifteen years. Does that meet the requirements of the request? I had never really considered it. I don't see a problem with it, it's pretty typical with other fences that are put in around the village and everything, and it's on private property, so we typically don't worry too much about that.
Any other questions? All that favors say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I understand.
I'm Delene Upstace. The second item is discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number sixteen eleven, changing the zoning classification of property located at two four nine North Main Street and two six nine North Main Street from TR six to planned development district for the Sanctuary Project at two four nine and two six seven North Main Street, submitted by Oregon Luxury Senior Condominiums LLC, the Sanctuary of Oregon property owner. We have a recommended motion from the Planning Commission to not approve this change in zoning. The vote was a four three, or a three four, you can see the roll call vote in there. I did vote against the motion, we had quite a bit of public comment, so at this time, I would make a motion that we uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation to not change this zoning.
Second.
And at this point, Chair Ballack, did you wanna allow some public comments?
I would like to allow fifteen minutes total in public input, and if the audience or the people giving the input would please do so, we'd like to hear new information, we're quite up to date on everything that's been given to the board so far, to the planning board, our planning board. Please stop, come up and identify yourself.
Before I start, my name is Sarah Dewey, I live at two six six North Main Street, and can we just kind of get a sense of how many people want to speak, so that we can avoid the situation we had at the Plan Commission on Thursday night where there was watchtapping and concern that there was gonna be thirty people, and we had four people that were gonna present?
Sounds like a reasonable request. How many people would like to speak?
Okay, so we have four, we have a total of four, so that takes a little pressure off.
Each have one.
Okay, all right. So again, my name is Sarah Dewey, I live at two six six North Main Street, and I did send an email this morning, I had some problems with my internet and computer, so it was at the last minute, I hope everyone had an opportunity to read through that, I included my statement that I made at the meeting last week. So, in light of the request of new information, or statement, I just wanna say that I am proud and thankful to be a citizen of the United States of America, and as such, have an overwhelming need and desire to believe in, have confidence in, and trust in our government, its processes, systems, representatives, and actions. Because of what I hear, see, read, and experience regarding federal, state, county, and local governments, the very foundation of my belief, confidence, and trust have been shaken. In order to do the right thing for my community, I have sacrificed and devoted precious time to work on this issue. In addition to many hours, I gave up my Fourth of July weekend, this past weekend, and I even canceled a trip to see my pregnant daughter and her family. So I ask, what are you willing to sacrifice in order to do the right thing? Are you willing to give up the approval of a few individuals who have excluded, dismissed, disregarded the residents of Oregon going back to two thousand and two, and the overwhelming opposition to rezoning two four nine, two six seven North Main Street? Individuals who may very well have backed themselves into a corner and have no way to save face? Individuals who charged with representing the well-being of the entire village have not done so in this matter? I believe at this time, I am left with no other choice but to beg the village board to do the right thing. Maintain your long-established history of confidence and trust in the Planning Commission, and follow the majority's recommendation to deny the rezoning of two four nine, two six seven North Main Street. I appreciate your service, your time and consideration, and look forward to seeing you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks for your input. Who's, who'd like to speak next? And please step forward and identify yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Mike Wunsch. I live at two ninety-nine North Main Street. I'm not gonna repeat all the stuff regarding flooding and et cetera, et cetera, that could affect our neighborhood and, and the fears of residents becoming the next Florida Avenue. What I will talk about, however, is the immense investment that my neighbors and myself have put into improving that neighborhood. That neighborhood was, has been improved greatly over the last ten years. The buildings, I know, I know both myself and, and several other families that have committed a hundred thousand dollars plus to fixing up their properties. Some of those, with this new building, which I've heard referred to by some people as the best option that we have, some of those people that have spent tons of money on their houses will now have potentially a three hundred foot long building that's forty-five foot high, wrapping around their house on two sides, in some cases dominating their backyards, approximately at least half of my neighborhood will have this to look at when they walk out of their back doors. My question is, actually it's not even a question, this will drag the property values of those homes down. And I can tell you that with all the money that I've put into my house, that I'm not expecting it all back, but I am counting on some of it back for retirement. And if my property values go down, I'm not committing money to fix up my house anymore. I know my neighbors won't be, because they have retirement, they have kids, they have colleges, they have stuff that they need to recoup at least some of their investment. So, but facing a situation where instead of improving the property values of the neighborhood, improving the tax values of these houses for the village, that we actually will turn that around and start tipping the neighborhood back into decline. And when people sell their houses, they're not gonna be as attractive to new homeowners coming in, we're going to have landlords coming in and renting properties, and in general, I think you'll agree with me, landlords generally don't maintain their property to the same level that homeowners do. So, we're in a scenario where the area north of downtown could actually tip over into decline. This isn't the best option for our, our neighborhood, this is an option that could possibly destroy our neighborhood, and I don't wanna see that happen. What I'm here to ask you tonight is to reject the rezoning of this district, and let us residents sit down with the current owners of the district, we know that that area needs to be redeveloped, let's see if we can sit down and come to an agreement on what that redevelopment looks like, that builds on our neighborhood and strengthens our neighborhood, rather than ripping the heart out of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to step forward next? And again, please identify yourself.
Sorry. So I wrote this today, so I'm just gonna read it, I apologize.
Oh, don't worry about it, that's fine.
My name is Jenny Nelson, and I live at one twenty-seven West Grove Street, and I also own one forty West Grove Street across the street, I liked it so much, I lived there twice. Thank you for listening to us all this evening, I know you guys have gotten lots of emails and have lots of phone calls, so I really appreciate all of the time you've put into this. I've spent many days, many weeks posting on Facebook, sending emails, writing letters to the Oregon Observer, trying to explain the Sanctuary Project to the greater Oregon community. I know this issue literally deals with my backyard, but I'm one to like, to know what other people are thinking. I've had some great conversations with people that don't live in our neighborhood, they've been intelligent conversations about the need for low-income elderly housing, they've been about explaining the mass and density of what's proposed, and they've been about the letter written by the village assessor saying this will cause all of our property values to go down, and they've been about the potential flooding in the Bad Creek area this could cause, which I've already lived through once. After these conversations, I haven't had one person say, wow, that's a great idea. Most of the conversations are something like, wow, that sucks. It'd be good for low-income elderly people to have a place to live, but the size of the project doesn't seem to make sense where it's going. Do we get to vote on it? Or, I'm not sure there's anything that can be done if the village decides to proceed. So, you can imagine how relieved and excited my neighbors and I were after the Plan Commission meeting where the vote was to deny the rezoning. We felt that we presented factual information to the board, and rewarded with the village representatives agreeing with us. They agreed with the idea that eighty-seven thousand square feet elderly apartment complex is too big to put in the middle of a residential neighborhood. They agreed that the potential runoff could be a problem, that the ninety-nine individual air conditioners could cause a lot of people, noise in people's backyards, and they agreed that the traffic this could create across from a school entrance, a crosswalk, and a street with a lot of kids could be dangerous. It was a great relief. Now you hear, there's been rumblings, and there's always rumors that go around, that some village board members might vote for the rezoning. The reasons most commonly given seem to be, it's the best we can do, or it won't be as bad as you think, at least it's not apartments. There's never any real factual or statistical information quoted as a need for the community, or the large amount of taxes that will be added to this great, due to this great construction project, it's simply, the church is ugly and this'll get rid of it. I'm asking you today to listen to the recommendation of the Plan Commission that you all have entrusted to vet out the proposals, to listen to the people in the community who think we can come up with a better, more fitting use for this space. I'm asking you to vote against the rezoning of the property. Please listen to your constituents, the people you represent, and look towards what the first project for the property should be. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your input.
And, and just for the record, I know you, you referenced that in your email, the letter was from the town assessor, not the village assessor, just you, okay, for the record.
Hi there, please identify yourself for the record.
I am Sarah Coffey, I'm loc, I live at one twenty-eight West Grove Street. I've come to many of the meetings, and I, I guess I have a couple of questions for you, am I allowed to ask you questions? Will you answer them? I guess that's, we may or may not know the answers. Okay, I guess, I wanna, I might, I guess, after listening to everything through the meetings, some of the things that came to my attention, after mulling it over, were the future burdens that all these approved assisted living facilities in our community will have on our community, and I guess, when you approve these proposed changes, are you thinking about the future burdens, as future tax money that we will have to incur for added fire and ambulance, ambulance service? Because there's a lot of elderly that are gonna be having to be taken care of in this community, and we don't have a healthcare facility. They will have to be shipped to neighboring communities, which take away our emergency personnel. And in one of the meetings, the fire chief did say that the board has given appropriate equipment when needed, that they're never denied that. So if that is the case, are you putting that in the budget, are you thinking about that? Cause I'm assuming we think more than one year out, like a normal business, you have a couple of years of budgets. So are those included when you're deciding, your decisions, that hey, we may need more ambulances, which are hundreds of thousands of dollars, you're gonna need more personnel, to make sure that everybody is protected and covered? And I, I'm wondering, do you do that when you're making those decisions?
I can answer that for you. When we, I think the first step is just to see if this project gets approved.
Okay.
And assuming, or if it gets approved, I would expect that in the next budget process, we'll start that planning process.
And how is that funded? When you know that you're gonna approve this building with all these people?
We don't know that we're gonna approve it, we haven't voted on it yet.
I'm just saying, when you, when, if you do, when, you mean, cause you have approved other developments, correct?
We have, yes.
So, my, my question is, how, how much do you decide, where does that money come from after you make the approval?
The purpose of this tonight is to take input, this is for it to get input.
Well, I'm wondering how you think about this before you decide, that's my...
We can't plan until after we've decided.
Okay. The next item is the, the neighborhood itself, it's a very active neighborhood, and the building as proposed will have a retention pond, a deep one, and I'm wondering if they're concerned about safety, will there be lighting and things available, cause I did, I asked this in the Planning Commission, but for the police, I'm assuming the police would want to, you know, survey that and inspect that each night as they drive through the neighborhoods, is that kind of stuff thought about?
Again, you know, we consider all options.
Okay.
Whenever there's a project, the first, I think the first step is to get the project approved.
Okay. All right.
You know, if it...
So I guess I wanna bring, what I wanna bring up is the budgeting, and the things to think about as part of your decision-making, because I feel like there's a lot of future burdens that are not, were not brought up in the Planning Commission, and, and that's my tax dollars, and I'm, I know that they're gonna apply for TIF if this goes through, and that's more burden on us as taxpayers if we have to bring this stuff in for these residents, which we should, as a community, if we're gonna have this, we should, but my concern is that that isn't thought about when you're making the decision, the short-term decision to approve a rezoning. And I want to voice my concerns about it and let you know about it.
Thank you for your concern.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
This will be very brief, and I just was, I was prepared to hand something out to you, but I, I'm wondering, Mike, did you already distribute this to...
Yes, it's in your packet.
Okay, so then I will not follow you.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Susan Chetavi, and I own a house at two twenty North Main Street.
Thank you, Susan.
So I'm not going, this is not gonna be lengthy at all, but I really hope that the village will include the community and try to come up with a better plan than this Sanctuary Building, and I think that there are a lot of positive alternatives, and that's what I was gonna present today. I think this is the most beautiful lot in Oregon, and I'd like it to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, Susan. Anyone else? Okay. I'll turn this back over to trustee Carpenter, and I'll ask that the motion be repeated so that the board members know what we're gonna vote on here.
I'm sorry, Jay, Matt just wants to say something, excuse me.
Go ahead, Matt.
I wanna say two things. First, in terms of the form of the motion, what you actually have before you tonight is an ordinance, and I think it's cleanest if the motion is to approve the ordinance, and that everyone understands that a yes vote means yes, they favor approving the ordinance, no means no, they don't favor approving the ordinance. So, I know the motion was to support the Plan Commission's recommendation, but I think the record would be much cleaner if we had a simple motion to adopt or to approve the ordinance, and then that's part one of my... And then, that's part one of my comments. Part two, for at least one and perhaps two reasons, a supermajority vote will be required to approve this ordinance. Three-fourths of the full membership of the village board, that means six votes, would be necessary to approve the ordinance. One reason for that is the fact that the plan commission did not recommend approval or recommended disapproval. That under our ordinances, the ordinances say that under those circumstances, a three-fourth vote at the village board is necessary to approve. The other reason a supermajority vote may be required is that a protest petition has been filed with the village under the statute. We haven't had time yet to analyze it, to determine whether it is a legally sufficient protest petition. If it is, again, it's a three-fourth vote that would be necessary to approve the ordinance. Again, all six trustees who are present tonight would have to vote yes. So, we don't really need to know whether the protest petition is valid, because the fact that the plan commission voted the way it did is in and of itself forcing a three-fourth vote.
So, for clarification for me, Matt?
Yep.
You started by saying that the vote should be to approve the ordinance, and then I heard you say that the planning commission voted to not approve the ordinance.
Yes, but the motion, I would recommend that the motion you vote on is motion to adopt the ordinance. And then if you wish to adopt the ordinance and approve the zoning, you vote yes.
So a vote of yes would be to adopt the ordinance with the changes to the zoning, to plan development?
Yes. A yes vote would be to change the zoning and to adopt the ordinance contrary to the plan commission's recommendation. In order for that motion to be approved tonight, it would have to be a voted, approved, we'd have to have yes votes from all six of you.
Mm-hmm.
If the vote is anything less than six zero, so if it's five to one, or four to, you know, it will not be adopted.
Meaning that the zoning will remain as it is now, zone residential?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, is that clear enough? And I apologize for the-
So-
Say that again.
Let's define this a little differently. So, if we vote yes on the motion you recommend?
Yes.
That is contrary to what planning has indicated.
That's correct. If you vote yes, you will be-
overturning their-
overturning their recommendation and approving the change in zoning. That's if you make the motion in the way that I recommend you do. And for, I have reasons for the purposes of clarity and the record for recommending that the motion be to approve or to adopt the ordinance, otherwise you end up with a double negative. So, motion to adopt the ordinance, if you don't want to adopt the ordinance, and you don't wanna see the zoning change, if you agree with the plan commission's recommendation, vote no on the motion. But we would need to have the, Genie and our clerk get clear on what exactly the form of the motion is that they would like to see.
Does everyone understand? No? Charlie? Okay.
So there is a motion on the floor, though?
Right, and that was gonna be the next thing I brought up.
Do you want me to withdraw my motion, or change it, Matt?
My suggestion is that you withdraw it and make a new motion.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Is that okay with the second?
It's fine.
And may I just say something that, I received this email this afternoon at 201 that petition, or developer, excuse me, was asking for it to be tabled tonight, because he had something, something came up, and so he was asking for it to be tabled to the August 1st board meeting. Just putting that in the record.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
So, I apologize, I forgot, we have one other procedural issue. Because this involves the adoption of an ordinance, our rules require that before an ordinance can be adopted, it must be read at two separate meetings before it can be voted for and approved. Now, the village board has the authority to suspend the rules and have both readings at the same meeting tonight. Now, so the vote required to suspend the rules is a two-thirds majority of all board members. So it would take five votes to suspend the rules. So I think the first thing the board should do tonight, and the first motion should be, if, well, the first thing you need to decide is whether you wanna simply do a first reading tonight, and not move on to a second reading and a vote on the ordinance until your next meeting? Or, do you wanna suspend the rules and have your first and second reading and vote on it tonight?
So I would make a motion that we suspend the rules and have the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
The second.
Great, now that would take five votes to pass that motion.
So this allows us to vote on the next question?
Correct. Okay.
Got it.
So suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so all in favor of suspending the rules and having the first and second readings at tonight's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so now we have permission.
Now you can make your main, your motion on the ordinance.
Okay, so now I'm going to make a motion. Hang on.
And that was Carpenter and Boudreaux, right?
Yes.
Is there an ordinance number?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
The easiest thing is to move adoption of ordinance.
Sixteen-eleven.
Sixteen-eleven.
Okay, so now I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt ordinance sixteen-eleven, changing the zoning classification of the property located at 249/267 North Main Street from TR-6 to Plan Development District and the general development plan.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
For discussion.
Okay. All right, so then, any discussion on this? So, to recap, if you vote yes on this, then we, you are voting to yes, change the zoning. And if you're voting no, you're voting to not change the zoning, you're agreeing with the planning commission, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I've got one question that numerous people have brought up about stormwater problems. I just would like Jeff to comment on that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we discussed this at the planning commission meeting, because it is a common, I think, misconception concerning kind of pre and post-development for stormwater. It is true that this area has had a significant amount of flooding in the past, primarily during the two thousand eight?
Seven.
Two thousand seven flood. Since then, we've actually installed new storm sewer along Market Street, including a thirty-six inch diameter storm sewer in Market Street. We've confirmed that that, that the development of this area, as well as the future development of this parcel, as well as the parcels and everything along there, are part of this storm sewer. A common misconception with new development is it's going to cause more flooding. And the issue behind it, our storm sewer regulations are very clear in limiting new, for new impervious surfaces, greatly reducing the peak discharge rates off of, off of this property. And hence the need for stormwater detention. So it's usually that you have to reduce the ten-year event down to the two-year event for pre-development, and the one-hundred-year event down to the ten-year event. Very typical, what that does is that forces the developer of any type in this parcel to put a, usually a stormwater management pond in, greatly reducing the release rate from this property, so it's stored on property and released over a very long period of time. So, I think, you know, it is, it is a fear, and I think it's thrown out there a lot of, we're gonna be flooded out, there's all this rooftop and everything like that, but the developers are facing fairly stringent stormwater requirements. And so, we don't have any concern regardless of how that parcel is developed, because we know it'll fall under our stormwater management plans.
Thanks, Jeff.
I'd like to add, too, that to reiterate what Mike said, there was a statement that our village assessor said property values were gonna go down if this was constructed. Again, that was the town assessor that made that statement. So, just wanted to make sure that all the board members knew that, too.
I just have a quick question. Okay. So we, so it gets passed, no, say, everybody says no. The people that are doing that, the two developers, can they come back again? Change anything?
They could come back, and they have to go through the process again, then, you know, do a public hearing.
I'm just curious, I didn't know.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Carpenter, would you like to restate the motion? And we should clarify one more time what a yes or a no vote means.
Okay. So, the motion is to adopt the ordinance sixteen-eleven, changing the zoning classification of the property. A yes vote means that you want to move ahead with the project as presented and change the zoning. A no vote means that you would be upholding the planning commission's recommendation, and the project would not move forward as presented. The zoning would not be changed.
Thank you, very good. Everybody understand?
Yep.
Okay.
So, Jerry, so the no would be the same as the planning board?
A no would be to concur with the planning board.
Okay, okay. Why don't we do a roll call?
Let's do a roll call, yeah.
All right. Brett Howard?
Nay.
Carpenter?
No.
Bollig?
No.
Poole?
No.
Grenier?
No.
And Boudreaux?
No.
The motion is-
So the motion is not adopted, and this, and nothing changes?
Yep.
The ordinance is not-
Thank you for the stage.
Okay, should we move on?
Yes.
You're welcome.
All right, so moving on to item number three. This is discussion and possible action regarding adoption of ordinance number sixteen-thirteen, amending section seventeen-nine-one-four, current eight, current B, which is the Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan, which is known as SIP Approval Procedures of the Village of Oregon Municipal Code. So I would make a motion that we adopt this ordinance that amends this section. Yes, that's my motion.
We, you might have it listed, I have it, I should, we need two motions for the next two.
Okay, hang on.
If you wanna do it that way.
First, I will make a motion that we waive the first and second readings and move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I will make a motion that we adopt ordinance sixteen-thirteen, amending section seventeen-nine-one-four, current eight, current B, Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan Approval Procedures.
Second.
Okay, so, as I recall, this, we are changing the code to reflect our current practices, right?
That SIPs come to the board for approval.
Yes. This is what we've done all along, but apparently this does not specify that we have to do that in the code, so we're making it official.
Yep. You got it.
Any questions on that one? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries. All right, item four. This is a discussion and possible recommendation to the village board regarding adoption of ordinance sixteen-twenty-four. This is an ordinance providing for the direct annexation of a portion of the Town of Oregon to the Village of Oregon, and this property will be the site of the new well, number six site on the west side of the village.
Second.
So my first motion is to waive the first and second readings to move for adoption. That's my first motion.
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And my second motion is that we, I adopt ordinance sixteen-twenty-four, providing for the direct annexation of a portion of the Town of Oregon to the Village of Oregon for the purposes of well number six.
Check it then.
All right, any questions on this?
Yes, so would you please describe where that is?
Oh, no.
It's, it's that, when you're, when you're headed north on, North Bergamon Boulevard, and you come to the dead Presbyterian churches on your right, if you look to the west, the site's right there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
A little south in that way.
I prepped him for that question.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, this is my last one. Do I have to do two motions for this?
Nope, this is a CSM.
All right. Okay, number five, discussion and possible recommendation to the village board regarding recommending approval of CSM as a certified survey map, right?
Yes, yep.
Yes. Okay, so this, I would make a motion that we approve the certified survey map for well site number six.
Second.
Any questions on this one?
It appears that Bergamon Boulevard crosses the site.
Yes.
Is that correct?
We've reserved, we've reserved additional land so that it'll be part of the right-of-way when, when that parcel gets developed. We've reserved a sixty-six foot right, wide, right-of-way through there, or property that we will incorporate into Bergamon Boulevard.
For streets?
Yes.
Okay.
I just would like to clarify that that's the ice arena.
What?
Isn't that the ice arena?
I would like to clarify that that is not the ice arena.
Thank you. That's, that's why I brought it up. I don't know where is the-
I did not know we could get farther away from the ice arena in the village.
For number five, Jerry.
Oh, okay.
Jerry's going ahead. He's jumping ahead.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions about the certified survey map for well site number six? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, I'm done.
Now we're onto this.
Oh, yeah, it's a arena.
Yes. Thank you, trustee Carpenter, for taking the easy ones.
You're welcome.
Yeah. We have public appearances, and we're gonna open a public hearing now for Sean Peterson, agent for Sean Peterson Enterprises LLC. Needs file an application for a Class B for entered malt beverage and Class C wine license with the village clerk for the Village of Oregon for the property at 100 North Perry Parkway, doing business as Lucky Puckers Bar and Grill, Oregon, Wisconsin. And again, I jumped ahead, this is the ice arena.
Now we're at this one.
Would anyone like to speak or ask questions? Step forward, please, and identify yourself.
Hello, my name's Sean Peterson. I don't know how a lot of this stuff works, I'm just kind of a regular guy, so please let me know what I need to do.
It's not that bad, you'll be fine.
We're regular people, too.
All right, awesome. So, why don't you tell us briefly what you hope to do there, Sean? And I think a very critical piece of information would be how you're gonna have your security, and how you're gonna keep alcohol away from minors, and how you'll interact in the performance of serving alcohol when there are minors in the building.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for your time. I am looking to indeed obtain a Class B liquor license for the property 100 North Perry Parkway, also known as the Oregon Ice Arena. I have, I have a good plan put together for the storage of alcoholic beverages at the facility that will be under lock and key. There would be a separate storage room for the alcoholic beverages that would be behind another locked door, which would have a combination code, so it'd be a room inside of a room. That would be one significant deterrent from anybody accessing the alcoholic beverages who should not be. I am an experienced licensed bartender for the last twelve years. I have never had an incident serving to minors, never had any incidents that are negative with law enforcement. And I am also a deeply rooted member of the community of Oregon. I have two boys that play hockey in the Oregon Ice Arena. I coach. I, I want nothing more than the best for the development of our youth of this community, and I would take every measure to secure that, their future, by not allowing alcoholic beverages to minors for purchase. I would have security by a private security firm at any large venue, hockey games such as the Wisconsin Whalers, or something along that line, where there would be a large amount of people. Any person who serves alcoholic beverages that works for me at the Oregon Ice Arena would be a certified, or I guess a bartender, a licensed bartender, that would also go through the responsible beverage servers class. I have gone through that class twice myself, very recently, as a part of condition, but I, again, would like to stress that I have, I've never had any incidents. I, I believe in the youth of this community is, is our future, and I do a lot of volunteer of volunteer efforts through the city of Oregon and many other places throughout Dane County. Um, so a lot of the other hockey rinks that we visit throughout Dane County, throughout the state, um, and outside of the state, have, um, similar operations that I am hoping to, uh, bring to Oregon. I hope I didn't miss anything.
Uh, Sean, I just have one question, if anyone else has questions, feel free to follow me. Um, when will you serve again? I guess I wasn't clear on that. When do you serve alcohol? During which events, or just all the time, or?
Yeah, it could be anytime. Um, I would, uh, be looking to work with or create a restaurant in the, uh, in the ice arena. Um, obviously, um, anytime that we would be open for business that would, at a time that would serve alcohol, uh, a certified or a licensed bartender would need to be onsite. Um, but yes, it could be at any time. Um, I would, uh, be against, um, serving alcohol in the ice arena area while there's a W I A game, uh, going on, um, you know, and, and all the responsibility that would come from serving beverages at any particular time within Wisconsin, uh, statu- statute one twenty-five that governs the, uh, the use of alcohol and the times restricted, I would ask to, um, not be restricted any further than those times, but, um, the buck stops here when it comes to any issues that have to do with serving alcohol, um, at that ice arena. I'm the guy that would be coming to you or that you would come to see if there's any issues. There's, there's nobody else, this would be, um, my, my operation would be done my way, using my twelve years of experience. I also work for the state of Wisconsin, uh, with the Division of Motor Vehicles, I'm supervisor of the Special Plates Unit, one of the most forward-facing, um, areas of the D M V. If you have a personalized license plate or specialty license plate, that's the area that I supervise. Uh, but I also had, um, worked in the administrative review process, um, working with, uh, O W I cases, so I have a, a lot of, you know, secondary experience in dealing with alcohol and how it, the effects can, um, take hold on a community.
Any questions for Sean?
I would just say, Jerry, to, in his application, um, you, you have, will have normal business hours and will be open during all events, including nightly practices. So would you be serving alcohol during nightly practices?
Potentially, sure.
Okay. Home hockey games, fundraising activities, birthday parties, or any other function?
Does that include youth hockey?
Yes.
And high school programs?
Not during W I A A high school programs, so.
Would you have continuous storage of alcohol on site?
Yes, sir. Um, and again, as I mentioned previously, we would have it in a locked storage facility away from anybody to have access. It would actually be a locked door behind another locked door in a separate room.
I've got a question. Go ahead, Eric. Is this the proper time for us to just make discussion, or do we wait until we get to, on the agenda where it says, "Discussion and Possible Action"?
I think it's up to the chair.
It's a, it's a public hearing.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. Matt, explain to me how the board, I know the board can do whatever it wants, but explain to me how the board can approve this applicant when an applicant came to us last year for the same building and we could not approve that based on the school renting property down there? Because our ordinance says something about so many feet of a school.
So that wasn't it? We, I, I, Mike, it just, I'm a little hazy on the details.
We thought it was true, but then we were told it, we, we were corrected, about the...
If there is a minimum separation distance between, what, the front entry to a school and a Class B premises, and I, I just don't remember, Mike's memory is that that turned out not to be an impediment to granting the license last year.
There was other issues with that gentleman?
Apparently.
Okay, I, I don't remember everything, but I remember it, but I see we got a, the paint, or the blue slip here says the school is still there.
Well, yeah, and...
For next year.
Right, because that was a concern, so, and maybe I'm wrong about the subject, I think we first told you that, but I think we were wrong about that, but, but regardless of that, I knew that some board members would want to know if Oasis would still be in the building.
Right.
And, uh, besides I've heard, um, you know, that they were gonna be leaving, but as I verify with Dr. Bustler, they're gonna be there for the school year and then they'll be moving into the new building, or renovated building, yep.
All right. I would just have a couple things I wanna make sure you're aware of when you look at the application. If, if you look at the, uh, supplement to the application under item ten, they have provided a detailed description of, uh, what the licensed premises would include, um, and it includes the lobby area, seating for forty to fifty people, the mezzanine, bleachers, and then it refers to also a grass exterior with tent, so there, the, the license would allow them to serve, you know, outside as well as inside the building. It, it looks like it covers the entire parcel of real estate, including the outdoor and indoor areas, and I just wanted you to be aware of that. Um, and you already asked questions about service during different kinds of events, and as, as far as I can tell, there aren't any limitations in the application itself that, that would just, you know, limit service to only certain kinds of events, so. And I think you already gathered that through your discussion.
So Matt, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
If you're comfortable, uh, would you feel, would you feel comfortable catching myself and some of the newer board members up on the work that you and President Statean did with regards to, um, looking at the village and alcohol from the perspective of the potential connection between alcohol-serving establishments and alcohol issues within the community? I, I know that there was an entire paper that was written, I know that you and President Statean have gone and spoken on the subject, but I have never heard your, your talk, I've read your paper, and I think it'd be helpful, especially as more new, um, establishments are coming before the board and asking for licenses, um, for us to hear what you found.
Uh, I, uh, I'll do the best I can. Um, so there is a, uh, an organization in Wisconsin, I can't remember exactly what it's called, something like the Wisconsin Institute or Center for Policy...
At Campus.
Yeah, it's, it's associated with the university, and, and that or- that organization works with public health officials around the state to evaluate and, and make recommendations for addressing the social, uh, problems that we do have in this state relating to alcohol abuse. And, uh, um, there was a report that that organization prepared that included recommendations for diff- all different levels of government, including municipalities. Uh, the village, um, spent approximately a year, or perhaps even more than a year, going through a pretty extensive process of, of reviewing and, and making adjustments to the village's ordinances relating to licensing alcohol beverage sales. Um, and so that's where the ordinance we have today came from, it came from that process. Um, um, the, the, I think the board's objective was to try and achieve the right balance in terms of regulations that would, um, address the, the negative concerns that people had about the cultural and social problems that, that we seem to be plagued with in some communities and, and allowing appropriate activities to take place. Um, so that's kind of an overview of the process. Um, now, that ordinance that, that was adopted by the village board, as I recall, that doesn't provide an answer to the question before you tonight, which is, should this license be granted or not? Um, or, but, but one of the things the board did learn during that process is that you do have the authority not only to not approve a license, but maybe more importantly to, um, decide whether or not there should be any either conditions attached to your approval or to decide whether or not, for example, this premise description, uh, should be accepted as presented. Perhaps you would decide it should, perhaps you would decide it shouldn't, but the point is, the board has the, the, the authority to consider those questions when presented with an application like this, and then, and you don't have to make a decision tonight either. I mean, you could say you want more information about this, that, the other thing, and, and you could craft conditions that you feel are appropriate. With this particular facility, I think the board in the past has, um, examined different conditions it might want to attach to any approval. Um, so you could certainly consider that again. Um, that's about all I can tell you.
Thank you.
Did the school express any particular concerns or request any particular provisions of your service?
Not to me directly, no. I, I don't, it's my, I'm out of place to say, but I, I understand that Oasis is leaving the building, uh, at the end of this, this, uh, next school year.
Right. Okay. Anyone have any? Got another question. Matt, based on the premise description, if we approve this tonight, and he decides to have a, a tent brought in to this, for some, that'll hold seven hundred people like it says, is that automatically approved, or does he still need to get the police department to look at that, to make sure the fencing is where it's supposed to be and all that kinda stuff?
So, I'm gonna do my best, and then maybe Mike will have something to add. From an alcohol licensing standpoint, if you approve this application as presented, he'd have the alcohol license necessary to have the tent outside and to have the event outside. What I'm not sure about is whether he would need any other approvals, potentially under your zoning code, uh, or, and, uh, potentially, some communities have an additional requirement in order to serve outside, an outdoor, uh, permit that may be required. I wasn't, uh, I'm not able to give you a definitive answer to those two questions though tonight, so if you don't have those requirements, if he's not subject to an additional zoning or permitting process, then this is it, and I'm just not positive.
Okay. In the past, people have always met with the chief.
Yep, you've always...
Police and fire to make sure everything was...
So the motion has come out of the board is that it's contingent on the petitioner or applicant meeting with the police chief and being, you know, satisfying to police chiefs. Brian, most likely would like, for example, ask for double fencing.
Right. Would that be a motion that we would ask each time he's gonna have a tent set up, or is it a one time, the first time, and then he understands what we expect?
I, I would think that as part of the motion would be that when he's gonna be serving, um, outside, that, you know, the chief and, the chief would have arranged it with the gentleman, that, you know, the applicant, that when he's gonna do that, these are gonna be the standards and this is what you're gonna follow, and if he doesn't follow, he's a violation of his liquor license.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, I mean, so if this is, if this is the, uh, the approval that he needs to serve outside and you wanna make sure that there's a process for evaluating how that's being done, then you need to address, you need to craft an appropriate condition as part of this approval. We can help you do that, it's a little hard to do on the fly sometimes, but we can certainly try and do that tonight, and if you decide it's, there are more conditions that we need to put in here, we can do that, but if it gets to be too complic- if there's too many, or if there's a lot of them and it gets complicated, then what, what we've done in the past is that we've said, "Give us an opportunity to come back to you with a, with a draft, um, resolution that we can adopt with all the conditions so that we can get it right."
Okay. Matt had whispered to me that, uh, we need to check the zoning code to make sure that, uh, the zoning, uh, district allows for a restaurant grill to be in that building, so I didn't think of that till...
And then the outdoor service area, something like that, I'm just not sure.
Well, I, I, the only thing, I was gonna comment on this as well, and this is something that's developed in the last several months, is, is the, the school district has entered into an, an agreement with the Ice Arena for the parking over there, uh, for the parking, so it's kind of a shared parking lot right now, so that would have to be discussed as far as if you're having an event out there, and, and it is school district property on the north boundary line, so if, if there is an issue with being located next to a school, which I don't know what it is...
I'll have to look that up, I don't remember that.
But, but just with the fact of, you know, being a shared, um, parking area there to the north, um, you wanna make sure that that's at least in compliance so that you wouldn't have, technically, if you had a W I A A event going on at the soccer field up there, that would be, I don't know if that's connected, Matt, do you know? I mean, if that's through it?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Um, I, I had a question. So, um, Mr. Peterson, one of the things that we need to, um, think about when we're giving a, an alcohol license to an agent is, um, your, your past record. And on here, I, um, you were very honest and you said that you had, um, an open intoxicant citation in Lowdy, Wisconsin, but you didn't put the date on there.
I apologize, it was, uh, it was on Father's Day last year.
Okay.
I was camping with my family and put a can of open beer in the back of my truck and drove my truck to, uh, to get milk or something from Quick Trip in, in Lowdy, and it's there, I own that mistake. I, the officer pulled me over for my registration being expired, which is completely ridiculous since I work for the D M V. But, um, that's true, it is true, it was a mistake. Um, I wasn't drinking and driving, I didn't have, uh, I didn't have any, you know, the sobriety test me passed, you know, the whole thing. You, you can also clearly see that I'd never had an O W I, um, and that, again, I've never had any, any sort of, uh, alcohol-related incident while performing duties serving alcoholic beverages.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna pause for a second here and ask if anyone from the public would also like to make statements or ask questions at this time. Mr. Grenier?
Hi, I'm Jeff Grenier, signing. Yeah. Uh, I just wanted to state, to make sure everybody knew, 'cause there's a lot of new board members, that when the Ice Arena opened up, for the first five years it was open, it did have a full-time liquor license, and we had no problems, and that was given back a few years ago, so this is not, like, inconsistent with something that has happened in the past. So, I'm no longer on the board, but I just wanted, I didn't know if everybody knew that we had a liquor license for five years, so.
Jeff, what caused it to lapse? Why did it go away?
Uh, new ownership. Well, you know, the first orig- original board took it over, you know, we, we built the rink and then we had it for five years. We had the Outlaws, we had some other organizations, they kinda, uh, I was part of the Outlaws and all that, so when, when our board went to the new board, they didn't think they were ever gonna use it again, so they gave it back.
Okay.
And within six months, the Whalers came forward and they're a junior league and they wanted it, and that's when the last one appeared, so in retrospect, they probably should've never gave it up, but I was the, um, representative for the last one.
So you were the agent for the last one?
I was the agent for the last one, yes, so for the first five years, and we worked with Doug and everybody else, and we never had a problem for any of our events, so.
And for clarification, that's Outlaws Ice Hockey Night at the Motorcycle Club?
True. Now we have the junior Outlaws, we have a bunch of, uh, almost gotten to a...
Stop talking.
Yeah. No, no, we actually, we actually, we actually talked to them, but it, so I didn't, yeah, there wasn't infringement or anything or anything like that, so, but yeah, it was, was, yeah, so we do have a bunch of different firms now that would like to do it, so, but. Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Uh, I have a question, under what conditions have we served alcohol over there for hockey in, in the past? Didn't, wasn't it an event by event or activity by activity?
You mean like what Eric was talking about, when we granted in the past?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there, there was security, you know, they had to be, get approval by the police department?
Well, we did it activity by activity or event by event, didn't we? I think with the original license was issued, I don't, I don't think it was covered that way.
Except for outs- outside service.
Except for outside service.
When, when they had the, the annual, uh, was it May or June, then that would come to the board and then the tent would go up and they would have to have security and bracelets and things like that.
Any further questions from board members? Just one last one, this, does this need to be approved by the police department?
But can you speak to that?
It has been approved by the police department.
Okay.
Actually, chief, you will just, um...
I didn't see any notes here saying that, so I just wanted to ask.
Yeah.
Ken, you wanna turn your mic so they can peek up on TV?
He did approve, um, the agent, which would be Sean.
Did they get a letter from the, uh, school to say, say it was okay?
No.
I thought I saw that someplace.
What's in your packet is two other additional things. One is from Jen Williams, who is the board president, and she, uh, apologized she has to work until seven, so she can't be here, but she's expressing support for Sean, Sean Peterson Enterprises, and then, then I was me checking with Dr. Bustler about Oasis in the school district. How long, how long does Oasis will actually be in the building, so? How long, how long does Oasis will actually be in the building, so?
Of course, there'd be a lot of change next year because of the, the school will no longer be there.
Correct, well, they're gonna be there one more school year than.
I mean, after.
Yes, right, yep.
Seventeen.
Yep.
In the fall of seventeen.
Yep.
Oh, so Oasis will be there yet for this coming school year?
Yes, correct.
Sixteen, seventeen.
Yep.
They will move out seventeen, eighteen?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
They'll be there just another year.
One year, okay.
Another year.
I figure someone's gonna ask that, so I, I emailed Brian a while back, not a while back, but.
Any further questions? Any further questions from the public? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time, and move on to item C, which is consideration of Sean Peterson, agent for Sean Peterson Enterprises, for a request for a Class B fermented malt beverage and Class C wine license for the property of 100 North Perry Parkway doing business as Lucky Puckers Bar and Grill. Could I please have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second, got a motion and a second, further discussion?
Do we need to put a stipulation on there about what I was concerned about? I can't even remember what that was now.
Yes. Yes, if you want it, you need to figure out, you need, you need to either develop it yourself, or you need some help from us, put it together.
How much?
So, this was, this was outdoor consumption, you wanna make sure.
Right, yes, yes, yeah, I mean, does anybody have an issue if we table it, and let Matt work it out and do it, or do we wanna do it tonight?
Are you in a rush, Mr. Peterson?
No, ma'am.
Yeah, I'd rather do it right than do it over.
I'd rather wait myself.
So you wanna make sure that outdoor consumption, there's a review process by the police department, security concerns addressed, things of that nature?
Yes.
Is that all you want, or do you want the village board to be involved as well?
I think if the police chief approves it, that's good enough for me.
Well, I'd.
I mean, we'd like to know when it's gonna be, but I, I, I don't know, that's my opinion.
Last meeting, what do we hold that bartender license, the applicant for the bartender license, we, we held his feet to the fire for what?
Three months. Three months.
For what?
For criminal background.
Yeah, criminal background, okay. You know, I'd like to see it tabled, and I'd like everyone to give some thought to the fact that, you know, Sean, I'm, I, I'm sorry, but you have to do a little time in the doghouse over that OWI.
I don't have OWI, sir. Open.
Open and talk, well, for that infraction, and I'd like the board to think about that while we have this tabled, and also, I'd like to hear President State's thoughts when he comes back. I know he's gone tonight, but, and I'm not holding it up just because he's gone, I, I'd like this thing thoroughly vetted before we proceed forward with it, and since we do have time, I would support what Eric is indicating.
How soon does he need it, does he say?
He said August 31.
That would be the day that we would, would like to get started, there would be some obvious prep that would go into, so no emergency as far as getting it done today.
When's our next meeting?
August 1st, two, two weeks.
Is that soon enough to make a decision that night? I don't think.
Well, your, your lease is until, effective until September 1st.
Right, if there's a.
You can't really do anything until the 1st anyways, so.
Well, right, and I wouldn't do anything until I hear back with the approval anyways, but.
If you get approval tonight, you can't do anything until September 1st, when your lease kicks in, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, in the meantime, would all board members please forward any thoughts they have, any items they'd like to see as conditions to Mike?
One other question I have, last year, when it came up, we actually received a letter from somebody at the school telling us not to approve it.
That, I think that was from Dr. Busler.
Okay, would it be something that we would like his opinion now?
I, you know, I purposely did.
Still feels that way?
I purposely did not ask him, because I didn't wanna prejudge what the board was gonna do, I just verified the Oasis, so.
Would you like him to ask?
I guess I would like him to ask, get his opinion.
Okay.
As, as would I.
I think that went through the, well.
It was through a school board meeting?
I think it did, yeah.
Simon Brad, and then they dragged me up to talk, it was horrible.
I'll, I can do that.
But, you know, members of the school board have changed, so I don't know if they would feel the same or not.
True, yeah.
Okay, all right, Eric, would you like to make a motion?
Well, you got a motion on the floor.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Yep, there is.
With a second.
For?
To approve.
With the.
There could be a motion now to table the pending motion until your next meeting.
Okay.
Do you have to call the first motion, or do I have to re?
No, the, the motion to table takes precedence over the main motion to approve, so you can make the motion to table now, if you wish.
Or anybody can.
Anybody can.
I'll move to table.
I'll second that.
To the August 1st meeting.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
That'll give you time to get everything we need.
Well, I've, I've got the one condition that you've told me about, if, if, if there are any other conditions, either tell me now, or send them to Mike, and so we can get something put together.
Yeah.
Sooner the better.
And I think, I think, I think we'll check on the zoning, just follow Matt's.
Okay, Candy, you're gonna contact Dr. Busler?
Yes, I will send him an email.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Sean.
Thank you.
You did a good job.
Item 28, approval of minutes from December 7th and December 21st, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, are there any additions or deletions or corrections from the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have no vouchers to approve tonight.
Sorry, jury.
Wow.
I knew you lived for those, but sorry.
I was on a train last week.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, look, she sat here, the, the whole meeting's on.
Thank you, move on to item 30, which is community input, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including on items not listed on the board's agenda. Any members of the public like to step forward and provide information to the board? Hearing none?
Wait, I'm sorry, Ed, did you wanna talk about your letter? Anybody submit the letter?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, bud.
You wanna thank everyone, or?
Yeah, you're facing the cameras now.
Sounds good. My name's Shahnathie Mahendran, and my father is Mahendran Navi Sevayam, he owns four liquor stores currently in different cities, and we would wanna obtain a liquor license from you guys, but I know there's a lot of debate about the liquor licenses and everything, but we always work with our communities, so if you guys don't want any more liquor stores, or any new liquor establishments, we don't wanna impose ourselves with, onto that. An example for working with our community downtown, we went to the city and told them, you know, we'll stop serving anything less than 375 milliliters, so we took the single serves out to help with the loitering, the littering, to help just the, the community and the students, because we have a lot of students around us. My father, we don't have a background of any violations or anything at all, you can even talk to Mike Rivera if you'd like in Madison, he knows us very well, too, and I just really just wanted to open up any questions for you guys that you guys might have, or any concerns at all, too.
We're not allowed to ask questions, are we?
So, you can ask follow-up questions, just to the extent necessary to, for you to understand what, what they're asking you, or what they're saying to you tonight, but it's not on the agenda for any kind of board discussion or action, so let me ask one question, though, you haven't actually applied for a license, correct?
Correct.
But you're considering doing so?
We, we would like to, but if it's gonna get denied, because if you guys don't want that kind of establishment, then.
You're not gonna be able to get that kind of feedback tonight, because it's not on the agenda?
I, I agree with that, yeah.
So if you want that kind of feedback, you'll have to ask that it be put on the agenda for informal discussion?
Yep.
It's signed for the August 1st meeting?
Yeah, we, we've already discussed, sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I've already talked to Candy and given her our whole background, hence you guys got the letter today, so we just wanted to come and sit in, in your community meeting and see everything that's going on in your community as well, so that was our real purpose for this.
So, I'd just like to do some clarification.
Yep.
You had mentioned that you're involved in the communities that you serve?
We do.
And you had mentioned a specific example in Madison?
Mm-hmm.
What other, can you give me other ideas or examples as how you get involved in the communities?
Especially like in our Lodi and our SOC communities, they do a lot of like charities, a lot of benefits, we donate a lot of money also to like the police, too, because they also do a lot of benefits for like the schools, as well as some of the underprivileged children, so we would basically donate money to them, too, so we love giving back to the community, because it's the community that supports us, so that's our whole premise, so a lot of the locals come to us, too, because they know us, and they do their own benefits or charities for people in their own neighborhoods or whatnot, so we still give back to them, too, so that's how we, we, we love the community-based small business field, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Okay, my thanks to you and your father for your input and your interest.
Thank you, we'll look forward to seeing you on August 1st.
See you August 1st.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item 31, proclamations and announcements, are there any board comments? Move on to item B, staff comments, Mike?
So we have the August 1st board meeting, and then there's no meeting on August 8th because of the August 9th election, right Candy?
Yes.
And then just a reminder, in November, there'll be, again, no meeting because of the election, so this seems to be a pattern here, but.
Do you wanna mention the forum tomorrow?
And the forum is tomorrow night, the building inspection forum, from 68 in the community room, so if the, if the board members are gonna show up, would you tell me, so that we don't have a walking quorum?
I'm gonna try, I can guarantee.
So we're gonna have, so we're gonna have technically two more board members show up, otherwise I will have to kick somebody out of the room, so.
Going once. Going twice.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 32, communications and miscellaneous business, item A, status of renewing the license for Happy Sunshine Seminary LTD, and this is a, we get a motion from June 27th, a special board meeting, so.
I see Ted's here, and I tried calling Ted on Friday afternoon, let the message on your cellphone, but I never got a response by 4:30, so at this point, the motion has not been met by Mr. Wallace.
Anything you wanna say, Ted?
Wasn't able to, wasn't able to do it.
Okay, I just thought, since you took the time to come.
I enjoyed my.
Why don't you step up to the mic, please?
I wasn't able to hold off.
Okay.
Yeah, I had another business that just dragged me down, and wasn't able to turn the corner.
Okay.
So, I thank everyone here for the time I spent here in, in your business, and the leniency, and some sense of forgiveness, and the time we've all had together, I real appreciate it. I guess that's it.
Okay, well, on behalf of the board, I wanna thank you for the courtesy of coming here to let us know, we appreciate that, and it's, it's been great having you here as a business in town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you.
Yeah. Item B is information only, a new welcome center event.
Yep, this from Randy, he's working on the, trying to bring exhibits into the welcome center.
And item C, Mike?
It's a bowling alley update, I put on, on the agenda that the owner of the bowling alley has informed the village, he will not counter the village's offer $450,000 for the purchase of the bowling alley property, he's indicated he's not interested in selling, and he's actually indicated he's gonna, also indicated he's gonna be putting some money into the business, so.
Okay, fantastic.
So I said, thank you for your time, and great having him in the community.
We appreciate his response.
Yep.
So we know how to proceed with our civic campus plan.
You kinda swallowed that comment, but I thought that was really, a really good comment, it's great having him in the community.
Yep, it is, it's very good to have him in the community.
I think we all felt that way.
Yep.
And when the campus plan is done, I'm sure that will fit in just perfectly.
Yeah.
FYI only, there's youth center information in the packet, any questions on that? Okay, move on to item 33, which is the library board minutes, any questions on those, I see Nikki is here. No? Sorry, Nikki, no questions.
It wasn't a terribly eventful meeting.
Okay, thanks for being here. Unfinished business, discussion of possible action regarding a task order to review proposed project to install sidewalks and at-grade crosswalk and rapid flashing beacons from Foxborough Drive along Wolf Street, and we've got a recommended motion there, if someone would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that item?
Jeff, do you have some comments for us?
Yeah, actually, just to clarify, this is definitely, it's a feasibility level study, this was brought to our attention, there is not a sidewalk or any kind of safe route along County Highway slash Wolf Street along there from that neighborhood, the Foxborough neighborhood over to, or into the village, when we looked at it, we said, well, you know, this really needs any valuation for many different aspects, because we're dealing with county highway, we're dealing with village, we're dealing with the town and private landowners, and so a lot of different entities, as well as honestly, safety with a very busy crossing right there, and so our view was, and then I think the recommendation at the time from the plan commission was, you know, let's, let's have our engineers look at this, provide us with an analysis to kinda look at what might be potential routes for sidewalks, alternatives for crossings, I know it mentions flashing beacons and crosswalk, I mean, those are, those are things that will be considered, but they'll also be looking at, you know, some long-term options as well, looking at the aerial mapping of this, and I think it'll just kinda bring things together, as well as for some potential cost estimates for engineering and design and construction, should the village board wish to kinda move ahead with this in the next few years.
Okay. Didn't we already do this?
Nope, not here.
What did we do, this, I remember bringing this motion before, before somebody.
This is, I think this is a motion to actually spend the money, last time we approved to have.
To have it done?
It was, was to bring the task order to the July 18th meeting.
Yeah.
It came out, it came out of committee, yes.
Okay. It was to, it was to see the task order and.
It's been a complicated meeting.
I was, I was thinking that, too, and then I figured it out.
Okay, all right.
We didn't, when the committee looked at it, we didn't have the task order.
Or the amount.
Or the amount, right.
Gotcha, okay.
You're not, you're not driven here.
All right.
So can I just ask a clarification, so Rooker Milkie is going to evaluate the design and construction of a sidewalk, the crosswalk, and they're gonna do all that for $4,500? I mean, I guess.
Actually, you know, I, I think the even further clarification would just be, you know, approving the task orders outlined in the July 6th.
Okay.
Letter and task, and scope in the, you know, July 6th, 2016, letter from Rooker Milkie, because, yeah, they do actually have quite a bit involved in, in there, I think this, this is a great project for an entry-level engineer, that they can kinda spend some time on and look things over, and then we would expect the deliverable, deliverable out of this to be a short, several-page letter report that, that they would present to the village board, but, okay, yep, it seemed about right, I looked it over, and it seemed about right for, too, you know, too little, and you wonder what you're really buying for the time, and too much, and it may be too much scope development.
Okay, thanks, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff.
Thanks for being put up so early on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, well, we, we try to, you know, make your life easy.
He was, he was mean to me last week, so.
So once he gets all of his equipment, all of a sudden we get a different Jeff.
Yeah.
See, you're.
Now that he has the jetpack.
I am number 106, of course.
There's rumblings in the community already, but we have many phone calls. Item 35, is there any new business? There is not, so we'll move on to item 36, and that's an approval of pending new operator license, and these are already approved by the police department, Oregon Bowl is Lisa Pistula.
So moved.
I, I think, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to approval of pending renewal operator licenses that have already been approved by the police department, there are none.
Correct.
Item 38, Mike, has some future agenda items for us to ponder over?
Yep.
Look forward to. And item 39.
Make a motion to a jury.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone.